Okay, good night everybody. This meeting is now called to order. This is Monday, October 29th. This is a work session tonight, so we appreciate seeing those faces tonight. We've got a couple of Mayor's Awards that we're going to be giving out, so we're looking forward to that. Also, a Mayor's Extraordinary Service Award. This is the first that we're going to be giving out. It's going to be exciting, so make sure you're tuning in. Before we get to the, before we jump on the regular agenda, I'm going to go ahead as a personal request and let Chelsea May come and give her presentation, then we'll move on to the other side. Chelsea May.
Thank you for honoring my personal request. Chelsea LaRude with the Greater Burlington Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I'm just here tonight to give you guys your fall update of what's been going on at the CVB. So far this year, we've been able to give out a little over $84,000 worth of grant dollars through four different grant programs that we're offering at the CVB this year. We were recipients of the Fiscal Year 18 Sports Grant, so we finished that out. We also received the Fiscal Year 19 Sports Grant, so those are the state dollars where we receive $50,000 for a fiscal year to be able to share among different sporting event partners. Our community event funding program, which is a normal grant program out of the CVB budget. And then this year, the CVB Steering Committee decided to start a new grant program called the Incentive Fund. There were a lot of organizations in town that were under new leadership or new enthusiasm to create brand-new events for the community, and so we thought this is one way we could help benefit what they were working on. So these community, and a number of these were new events to the community, so we hope to see those continue to grow. We've also mailed out almost 11,000 community guides this year, and this number has gone haywire for us this year. Last year, total was a little over 3,000, so to go from 3,000 to just shy of 11,000 has been huge for us. These guides have been shipped to 28 different countries, 47 states, also including Washington, DC, Puerto Rico, and the US Virgin Islands. And we can attribute a lot of that to a new partnership that we started in July with the State Tourism Office. So now when somebody goes to the state website to request a state tourism guide, they can also request ours, and that partnership has been a great increase for us. And then that attributes to a little over 9,000 visitors at the Welcome Center, which have come from 30 different countries in 49 different states. So we definitely do have that worldwide audience there. And, you know, normally I attribute these international visitors to our riverboat dockings, but unfortunately, we had to cancel two of those this fall because of the high river levels. So when the State Tourism Office tells me research is saying people are kind of done with Europe, they've been there, done that, they want to see the Mississippi River, I think this is proving very true, that international travelers are wanting to see what America has to offer. And the one state we are missing at the Welcome Center is Vermont, so if you know anybody that lives in Vermont coming to visit, send them our way so we can hit all 50 states this year. We've also had about 20,000 digital page views of the community guide on our website with those top cities, including Burlington, so they're looking at it once they're already here: Annapolis, Maryland, Des Moines, Davenport, and Chicago. One of the brand-new things that we did this year is we worked with the Recplex and JK Sports, which is a softball tournament organization company here in town, to create a brand-new event called Kiss the Cup. And we were trying to come up with a way to attract teams either back to Burlington that haven't played here in a long time, or teams that have never played here before. So we created an invitational-only tournament and looked at top-tier competition teams in Iowa, Illinois, and Missouri, and they were specifically invited to play for, to a free tournament at the Recplex with the requirement that they had to stay in one of our hotel rooms. And that tournament generated 29 teams from St. Louis, Chicago, Kansas City. We did have one Wisconsin team in the Des Moines Market. It's kind of hard to see, but you can see where the dots are. They did come from a pretty good distance for this tournament, and so we're already working on plans for 2019 on how we can grow it and improve it, and we're looking at trying to get 45 teams here in 2019. Hotels were very happy with that event as well. And of course, we had our first-ever Gus Makker Tournament this year. We had 137 teams that participated. There were 544 players that came from 110 cities in seven states, so it definitely had a very wide attraction to our community. And the City Haller Vaulers, of course! So we're really excited to continue years two and three of our contract with Gus Makker and see how we can grow that event and continue to bring that back to our community. So looking at our impact numbers of travel, as a reminder, these numbers are always a year behind, so I just received the 2017 numbers in September, and visitor expenditures in Des Moines County reached just shy of $139 million in visitor expenditures. That is a 1.85% increase over 2016, and the state as a whole had $8.5 billion spent in 2017, a 3.3% increase. And the CVB set a goal in 2014 with our Partnering for the Future campaign to increase these visitor expenditures from $500 million to $650 million, and we're 83% to that goal with one year left, so we're right on target to hitting that goal. We do continue to be ranked 13th out of the 99 counties in Iowa, so continuing to keep that spot steady. Hotel motel occupancy, as you're aware, has seen a decrease over the last couple of years. We know a lot of that is due to Iowa fertilizer. What we're looking at here is the light blue bar, all the way on the left is 2013, trying to go pre-Iowa fertilizer, and the dark blue bar on the right is 2018. You will notice we are at a drop compared to 2013 still. I would assume part of Iowa fertilizer ramped up late 2013, and then I think there's just this common misconception out there that hotel rooms are hard to find in our community because of the plant people living in our hotel rooms, so we're working hard and trying to change that perception, and just Kiss the Cup is a great example of bringing those teams back to the area. So one way to kind of look at those occupancy numbers and another way is to think about last night. So on average, our hotel occupancy for the year is about 52.9%. There's 836 total hotel rooms in our community, so if you look at that average, 442 rooms were booked last night. Think of an average of two people per hotel room, so that's 884 visitors that went in our community, and when somebody travels, they spend an average of $142 a day while they're on their travels, so $125,000 was spent last night in our community. So just kind of another way to think about it. So thinking ahead to 2019, thank you for being a partner in our market study, so we are still waiting on those results. We expect to have that study complete here within the next couple of weeks, and so when that study is complete, we will have a better understanding of what our sports market study and our sports market area actually looks like, where some ways we can improve, how to recruit some of these teams back here, some tournament ideas, what are facilities 100 miles around us doing. So as soon as we have that study back, we'll get our partners back together and analyze those results and create a game plan to move forward and continue to grow that. 2018, we did purchase a brand-new room book, room block booking software that we did test out with Kiss the Cup, and it does seem to be successful, so it's a consolidated location where when teams are coming, they have all the hotel information from one website, they don't have to jump around. So we look to grow that moving forward, and then just continuing to learn from our event organizers, sporting events, and arts and entertainment, and how we can all be better partners together and grow all the visitors to the area together. Any questions?
Counselor?
No, impressive numbers, though. I like it when you break it down to one single night.
Yeah, I, on the, you said if somebody's visited from every place except for Vermont, I've been corresponding with a guy named Abe from Burlington, Vermont, and he's coming to visit next year, so we'll be able to cross that one off. And you said they, people state for about, what is that, one and a half days? We need that to be about 2.3 days, so let's, let's work on that.
I'll work on that.
You guys good?
Outstanding.
Chelsea May, thank you. Okay. We'll state this again. We're in a roll-down hill, kids. Okay, number three is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance omitting Section 58.192 Motorized Vehicles of Chapter 58 Noise Control of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Chief, you want to refresh us?
Yes, this is the Jake Brake Ordinance that the citizen had come to us with. He lives along 34, and hopefully, the implementation of this and the signage will curtail that from happening, the noise that's being heard. It's pretty self-explanatory in there, and I was just talking with Nick a little bit about the signage, and there may be signs posted already, but we'll check on that a little bit further and contact DOT as we get closer to the end of the reading.
State's responsible for those postings, right?
I believe so, yeah. That's why I'm going to make contact with them, just to verify who's going to put the signs up, but we'll get it done.
Okay. You guys good? Good. Thank you, Chief. Number four is a resolution approving the agreement for-
Can we waive that? Sorry.
Point of order.
Anyone else okay with that?
Yeah, I'm all right with that.
Good call, MPT. Oh, no need to be sorry. Okay, number four is a resolution approving the agreement for a revitalized Iowa Sound Economic, Economy Program, RISE program, project in the Flint Ridge Business Park. Assistant City Manager.
This resolution in front of you would approve an agreement with the DOT to accept the RISE grants money. Previously, during the application process, when we brought forward, there were some changes that we had to discuss with the DOT, and you can see that overhead. The amount awarded was $413,000, down from the initial $520,000. The amount of road that the DOT was going to allow us apply for on a road shortened because we created access to, the lots are not very visible, it's essentially the red roadway that comes westbound off of West Burlington Avenue. Access is created to Lot 3 already, so the need to go all the way west to where we would have our future road intersection was not needed in their eyes to, to fit the grant application. So we, they removed a section of it, and we were approved for $413,000. And so what I have done is had Jesse give you a map of the area to show the project costs of that area, and I'll have Eric put up the cost here soon. The overall project cost in that area is at $1.6 million, as you can see. The portion that is funded is, is 418, I misspoke, $418,000, split 50/50 between the city and RISE, of which we're using TIF dollars. And then you see the next portion is 614, which is, if you move that off, would you, Eric? To show the blue section, that would be, that's that section of road, and then the $150,000 on there is the parking that you, we had discussed when the indoor Recplex was here. That parking would go off. What is kind of the trail and roadway space to get back there, and in looking at that, it hadn't been discussed before, but Jesse threw together an estimate to move the trail in between the parking and the roadway. From a safety factor, I think it makes a lot of sense, but it's an $88,000 cost, but I think that it makes a lot of sense to move that. Even currently speaking, I think that the safeness of using a trail inside of a parking lot becomes a little blurred for both the car occupants and then the trail users, so I think that move makes a lot of sense. But if you want to throw the funding back up, we can discuss anything that you have questions about.
Was the 600, was that budgeted?
The 614, we had budgeted for, I think, 2020. This project, upon approval, I will have staff begin survey work to begin, and I would, I would have them survey the whole scope of this roadway intersection, just, not just the RISE, but then also the other roadway, to plan to do that next summer.
I thought we budgeted 500 grand for the city portion on that.
That was for the parking, for the indoor, for the indoor Recplex parking on their property, but then also $150,000 worth of parking on city property. I don't know if there's any questions about the roadway and the costs and-
So the $1.2 million or so that city funds, $150,000 we set aside out of the discussions with the indoor rec facility. The remainder would be TIF financed. It is a year sooner than what we had built into the five-year capital improvement plan. It, for one, with prioritization to get it done a little bit quicker with the indoor facility being built out there, kind of moved that up in priority order for getting it done. We have the ability to, I mean, there's funding to make it happen to borrow with TIF, we'd have to do that borrowing this next spring.
But how much more is our project, is our share as a result of the RISE cutting the road back?
About $100,000.
Any other questions?
And this would be designed and bid out all as we would-
It's 2019, annual adjustment.
Outlines the fees for provision of sewer service for five years. We've done it annually in the past. After we had the rate study that was done, it was a presentation from Beamster and Kim a month or so ago, we talked about implementing their, the full five-year rate schedule that they were recommending in that study all at once, so that, you know, one of the big things is for us with going to the DNR, Department of Natural Resources, and trying to work with them on some flexibility with our consent decree. They, they have some requirements on us to, to show that we are proactively working to get work done, that we are proactively seeing our rates systematically move up, and as long as we're showing that, it gives us a little bit more flexibility, bargaining power with them for requesting some more time. If we had to, again, if we had to meet the time that is in our schedule and do the work as it's currently engineered, I, it, it would be more like a doubling of rates immediately, I think, to make that, that funding happen. I didn't try to pencil that out to figure it out, but we need, we need the help. This would match pretty much what our increase was this last year. This last, this July 1, we increased 3% for the non-metered to 9% for the meter. What you see here is a 3% for the, each year for five years on the non-metered, and a 10% annually on the metered. And the reason for the difference in that rate increase, again, this was reviewed with, Beamster and Kim pointed it out, are the charges that we are collecting on the metered side are significantly below what we're collecting on the non-metered.
Questions, guys? All right. It's going to happen regardless, so, all right. Number-
Six.
Perfect.
I'm just trying to help. I saw you had your cheaters on.
I was just trying to find myself. If that was all right with you, sir.
I was just trying to help, that's all I'm doing.
Number six. Good call, Counselor. Resolution approving the final plat of Park West subdivision.
This is a 16-lot subdivision, previously preliminary-platted in September of 2017 with Planning Commission approved by Council October 2 of 2017. Both voted 3 to 0 to recommend approval of those. It's at a point now where he's ready to do the final plats, still has some minor review of the infrastructure from the public works side, but Lot A would become a public street upon acceptance by a separate resolution of the City Council. Temporary easement for turnaround on Lot 9 shall remain in effect. As this was discussed previously, it tended to connect to the lot to the south. In doing so, it's a dead-end road, so we have a temporary turnaround there on Lot 9 to allow emergency vehicles' sanitation to turn around at that point, so that stays in effect until this roadway is continued. Stormwater detention area on Lots 13 through 16 is maintained by the Developer Homeowners' Association and is required to continue to operate to allow proper flow of stormwater. This is Zoned R2, so this does allow single-family and two-family residential. One note, a condition, just from staff's recommendation, they initially had Park West Street listed on that. Our policy, our street naming policies that we advise would not recommend that name because we do have a Park Avenue, a Parkway, and having West Avenue in that location, we've had that discussion with the developers, so our recommendation would be not to have Park West, but a different name. So that's kind of our summary, and I don't know if Mr. Cahill has anything else to add.
Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, we're getting anxious to get this approved because you can't sell a lot until you get the final approval. Of course, we got people lined up, you know.
Beating down your door?
Yeah, that's right. Bad time to do a subdivision with interest rates going up and the economy perhaps going down, so, but that's the way it goes. But yes, I, I agree with Eric. He, he doesn't like Park, Park West Street, which I thought was just great, but there are a lot of parks. In fact, I did a subdivision, the street is Park Place, Alba Riley. We've thought of other names, Horizon, we're kind of settling on that perhaps, that sounds like a good name. It was better than Danny Boy or Cahill Street, or my wife suggested Dan's Way, but I think Horizon, if that's okay with Eric, we would probably go with that. The only other request I would have is when we put that street in, right there off of West Avenue, you see where it says Lot 2? That's where Mark Peterson built, rebuilt, really, really rebuilt that house that was on that lot, which I didn't know until Eric told me a week ago, that that makes Lot 2, it makes him have to maintain all the way to the street right-of-way. And you see, the street is only 27 foot wide, so we've got about 15 foot there where it was a subdivision, right about where the O is, there's a line there, and I'd like to ask the city to waive the sidewalks on that, well, Mark would ask me to ask for that because that's going to be part of his yard to maintain. That's what we discovered, that it's now a corner lot, which means he maintains to the street, to the curb. That was a surprise to him, and it was a surprise to me because I was going to landscape that whole area. So, anyway, so we request it, you can think about it, and I'd, I'd ask that the council members drive out by there and see what a beautiful subdivision it's going to be because it's really about finished. The sanitary sewers are in, and the storm sewers are in. I think the city still has to film that. The water, the water supply system is in, and the water company has got, they're testing that now, they put chlorine in it, and then they'll be blowing that out tomorrow so that we'll be able to use the water. Alliant is, that really doesn't involve the city, but Alliant is, they paid for the underground utilities for that subdivision, and they're going to get to it one of these days. I think maybe tomorrow they'll start on the electrical system, and the gas lines will probably be put in within the next couple of weeks. So it's moving along, and it really does look nice, I'm looking for somebody to grade, grade it and seat it for me, hopefully, yet this fall. If you know anybody that does that kind of work, I'd like to get their number. Other than that, it's, it's really turned out pretty well. So Horizon, I think, is going to be the name then, Eric, if you want to write that down, and maybe next week, if everybody goes out and takes a look at that, you'll see where I mean that, that poor gentleman that now owns or has to maintain up to the street curb because he's on the corner.
Does he have the, I've been by there several times, because I don't live far from there, there's some abreviations, and then there's some smaller-
Yes, that's House.
Evergreens. Are those, is that part of his?
That's part of his.
Because there's a retention wall right there to the east of that.
Right, he put in the retention wall. See, he raised that lot about 4 feet.
So then right now, he's expected to maintain from that-
To retention wall.
Over to the new street.
Yep. And there's not anything we can do about it. Eric says it's in the city code, so we're, I was surprised, he was surprised, but he isn't, he has said he really doesn't want a sidewalk there. He's put a ton of money in that house. I tried to buy the house so I could tear it down and run the street straight in, but that wasn't to be because it went so high at the auction. And he has really improved it, it really looks nice. In fact, everybody thinks I did that improvement, and I get thanked for it all. Of course, I accept their thanks, but he knows.
Just a note on that, our zoning code for subdivisions, 170.80.812, does sidewalks, does require sidewalks on both sides of all new streets and new residential subdivisions, so that's the city code requirement. Looking at the area, West Avenue, Willow, Garden Lawn Dale, all have sidewalks on both sides of the street. The preliminary plat, as you see there, that highlighted portion, it did show a sidewalk on the preliminary plat, but obviously, that's a separate owner, unique situation, but staff always has recommended to stay with our city code of keeping sidewalks on both sides, but it's up to council to waive that.
So is it, is it expected that we would ask the owner of Lot 2 to put the sidewalk in, or is Mr. Cahill-
Generally, the developer would, with their subdivision.
Actually, I'd rather do it for it. I don't mind having a sidewalk here, truthfully. But he doesn't want a sidewalk there.
He doesn't. Mr. Peterson doesn't want to maintain it, but Mr. Cahill would put it in.
You guys have any other questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Okay. Number two is a resolution acknowledging and accepting the reduction of the interest rate on the SRF loan.
So we received notice from the state that there was an interest rate reduction on one of our existing SRF loans. I hadn't really thought about having a resolution to accept it, but that's certainly fine. It saves us, Stephanie, I don't-
A resolution to accept savings.
Don't know if you know, I think it was in $150,000 or $200,000 over the life of the loan. You get a good answer from back there, because you don't care about this still. But it saves in about the $200,000 range. I haven't looked at this in a week or two, so I don't know the exact amount, but the reduction was from, what, 3 and a quarter down to 2%, I think?
Great. Awesome.
Yeah, we'll always take those, so. You guys good?
Yep.
Okay. And number three is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all-night lighting service in the Sunrise West subdivision. Nick McGregor?
This resolution would approve four streetlights in the Sunrise West subdivision. This may seem familiar to a couple of you, this actually came up last fall. The request was remade, and I decided to bring it forward because it was a new council, and some of the pricing had changed from when I initially had talked to Alliant. The four lights would be paid for by the Sunrise West subdivision for installation. In the letter that was in the memo, or in the, in the packet, was different than what Wes Nichols and I had talked about. The installation cost was more like $2,500 instead of $2,000, and then the ongoing cost was not $686, but $725 per month. Last time, I had recommended not to install the streetlights because of the current streetlights there do not cast a very good light, and they're requesting to install the same lights but LED, and so my, my recommendation stays the same. I think that the, the current streetlights there could be much improved if they were to put Cobra heads. In the letter, you note that they don't want the Cobra heads because of the aesthetic value that they currently have, but if they were to improve their streetlights, I think they could greatly improve their coverage of, of light in the area. I think that, I have a picture, but it doesn't do it any justice. The biggest problem with the lights is they're too high in the air for what they are, and the glass is very opaque, it doesn't cover a whole lot of area. This is actually one off Navajo. I think one of the, this, we actually maintain this one, which is a different topic of its own, lights that we have to end up maintaining. You know, something like this, Alliant doesn't carry, unfortunately, but it is probably the appropriate height where those lights need to be. That's only 12 foot off the ground. That's only twelve foot off the ground versus the ones that are in Sunrise West are twenty foot. The, the casting area that they have for the lights just does not, does not work. So my recommendation is to not approve these, I think Sunrise West may have some people here, they had talked, Dick Keith had said that they would be coming to the meeting, so I don't know if they're here to talk.
Have, have they expressed any interest in working to try and change out the lights that they've got?
Alliant had, Alliant maintains them, they had, they had talked about replacing them, but I don't know where their, where Alliant is on their schedule. But they would simply replace them with the LEDs versus that, the LEDs have a clearer glass than the opaque.
I have a question to Nick, aren't the LEDs brighter, so perhaps with that opaque, they, you'd still get more?
Yeah, the LEDs are, have a different kind of light, it's a wider lot, wider light, it's, it's a higher held than, than the other ones. It could help a little bit, I think that these lights are designed for more of a downtown setting where you have four, five lots, or five, four or five lights in a, in a block rather than two at each end of the lot, or block, I keep saying lot.
Yeah, it's the wrong, it's the wrong setup.
So I don't know if Sunrise West has any folks here.
Is there anybody here from Sunrise West? Okay, council, you guys good?
Did you say you wanted that moved from consent to regular?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, because I'm recommending not to approve it, if that makes sense, I would, would want it to go on the regular agenda.
Okay, you guys good?
Has anything changed since last year when we made this request?
The pricing has actually gone up, the, the pricing was at six eighty-six per light, the pricing per month per light is up to seven twenty-five.
Nothing has changed, right?
No, the, the light is the same exact light, the same exact pole.
Okay, you guys good? Thank you, sir. All right, next is a resolution approving an amended agreement with Midwest Truck Advertising for professional advertising services on city buses.
Hence, I stayed, I walked back there and realized that I had the next item, so.
What say you?
This was actually an agreement that you saw in August, upon approval and upon signatures from Midwest Truck, the DOT decided to get into the procurement of advertising contractors. So they, Midwest Truck pushed the brakes on our contract, which actually did us a favor because they went statewide. They were able to reduce the percentage that we were giving up. So we went from forty-five percent share to a fifty percent share, so it increased our share by five percent. So it's, other than that, it's the same exact agreement. So all I'm asking is to reapprove this agreement, and so that way we can get underway with the truck advertisers. So in, and as I talked about last time, we used to have Houck Advertising that put wraps and stickers on the bus. This is a company that does a very similar thing, and so that's, that, we get money off of that.
You guys good? Thank you, sir. Number five is resolution approving lease agreement for the basement of the building at five oh one Jefferson Street, Burlington, Iowa. Mr. Tisland?
This is the former youth center, that's basically sat empty since the youth center has moved out. We've had a couple requests or uses in the past, our requests come forward more on a temporary basis. But the explosion baseball organization wanted to have that site for some practice or drills. And they felt, did tour it and felt it would be appropriate for their use, it'd be pretty limited use after school or some weekend use. But wanted a lease agreement, this is the same format as the current lease agreement with the senior center, but does charge them a hundred and fifty dollars a month for use of it. It is a month-to-month lease, it's not a, so it can be opted out at any time, but would allow them to actually use the facility and recoup some of the cost.
Council, any questions?
What happens on the, on that, because I'm not familiar with the, the senior center, who pays the light bill?
I believe the senior center pays.
So the basement would be, they would have to work that out?
Yeah.
I think that we ended up, before, we had a split cost arrangement between the, the two. And I think that they discovered that they were, I mean, with the youth center in there, they, I can't remember this, the, the way this split worked. But I think that they were rather surprised by how much their usage of the, of utilities was. We were paying, we were subsidizing their utilities when we were in there, and I don't know if it's a similar arrangement that you're looking at.
Might have to check with Braden again on that.
Any other questions? Okay. Brings us to, we've got a hearing set for the nineteenth, consideration of an ordinance amendment to ordinance number thirty-two twenty, an ordinance creating the Sunrise West Plania Development Overlay District. I'm making changes to section four land use requirements. Want to talk about that, Mr. Tisland?
They're looking to do a new subdivision, or plotting out five new lots, previously, all the homes were on one large lot, and now the homes would be on individual lots, so there's some minor changes to be.
We also have number B. Do you like that? Number B, consideration of an ordinance many various sections of chapter one sixty-one housing code of the city of Burlington Municipal Code. Do you want to say anything, Mr. Tisland?
Some minor changes we'll bring forward.
Just asking a question, no reason to get rude, anyways. All right, what, what changes are being amended?
I don't have those in front of me, they're just mainly minor wording, I think some electrical that to bring in line with our current electrical code, so there's not differences there. But there's a couple minor ones that really just clean up the code a little bit, what the current building and electrical and plumbing codes are.
Good?
Good.
Treasurers report, and then class big seven.
Okay, there was two treasurers report in your packet again, June thirtieth, and I'll be happy to say the auditors started today. So we should have the final numbers for sure soon. So nothing's really changed too much with that one since the last time you saw it. And then there's September's treasurer's report was in your packet, and there's nothing really unusual going on. You'll see a big influx in the general fund once we do property taxes, because those haven't been received as of the end of September. Other than that, there's like some of the things that are back in capital projects and stuff, or just timing of when we get money that we get reimbursed for various rise projects or T-SIP and stuff. So I didn't know if anything, if you guys had any questions?
Are you busy saving us money?
Trying.
Yeah, as long as you're not surprised, then I'm good. Everybody else is good?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
And then, class of eighty-seven, we appreciate you. Okay, brings us to number three, update TAMA building.
Mr. Wells emailed an update just this afternoon, I handed out to council there, I can run through briefly here. He did say he had a, a meeting in Denver last week, wasn't able to make it to this meeting. But just to run through it, number one, his goal again is to get Jefferson and Third Street open as soon as possible. Two, they have crews continue to clean up sidewalks on the site where it is safe. Three, draft of the proof of loss will be submitted to Grinnell Mutual on November eighth, that's what's required for the city to secure the demolition reserve.
Say that, say that again.
The demolition cost reserve, for the city to secure that from Grinnell Mutual, he has to submit his proof of loss to Grinnell Mutual. So that's what would allow us to have that ten percent reserve cost that we.
So is that, is that, is that paperwork hard to acquire, take a special pen?
I don't know on that, that's between him and his insurance company, he has to file that directly with them. So once that's filed with Grinnell Mutual, they have five days to send a certified letter to the city council notifying that they have that demolition reserve amount. He has worked with five different structural engineer firms, and this email said his, he has his last meeting November thirteenth. He just emailed at the start of this meeting saying he has meetings set up November second, November fifth with the structural engineers. So that's moved up about ten days from what he has in this, this memo. His estimated schedule, I guess that he has here, review safety fence border locations on November sixth, partial west alley debris removal and upper wall demolition November thirteenth. Design finalized November twentieth, materials supplied November twenty-eighth, material fabricated December twelfth, installation December twelfth to the nineteenth, and then open the street when complete. So I think that's his idealized timeframe for getting the bracing up and opening up the streets. They have one proposal for demolition of the debris and receiving a second demolition proposal tomorrow, and still has plans to rebuild the structure.
When did he inform you or whoever that he was not gonna be here this evening?
Just late last, I think it was last week emailed.
It was Thursday, I think he told me.
Didn't he initially say that he was gonna have the bracing done, and the bracing was done by November tenth? Trying to think back from my notes. Wasn't the bracing supposed to be done by November tenth so that we could have the, and it was, the street was gonna be open?
It was gonna be open for holiday season, this is, everything's backed up on this, according to what we initially heard.
I drove past there, I saw two gentlemen, they were picking up bricks, one brick at a time.
Is that a song?
Eric, is it possible that we can get him here next week, or can you put the pressure on, try and get him here?
I can request, but.
There's nothing else we can do, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I told him that I wanted him here at every possible work session.
I remember you saying that.
So I'm not really.
Let me ask this, we've got some folks in the crowd that are part of the downtown, has, has he been in communication with you? Has he created a better, better avenue of dialogue since the last time we talked?
I, I'm Suzanne Wells, I have the bean counter.
Can I have your lecture, please? Can you give us your name and address, please?
Sure, I'm Suzanne Wells, I own the bean counter at two twelve Jefferson Street downtown. I had an email exchange with Mr. Wells this last week. It was a little different than what's being said here, but we're seeing the same thing that Shane said, two guys out there moving one brick at a time. We'd also like to see the road open by the holiday season, but that doesn't sound like that. That, he gave me a little bit of a timeline in the email, I'm happy to pass it on, it's not double top secret. But it, it didn't say late December.
Oh my, it was just, mine has become softer and softer, and that's, that's my issue, and at the end of the day.
It's gonna keep getting softer, you know the deal on that.
Immediate costs aren't being very, they're not being felt by him, they're being felt by other people in the community. So I think it's, it's really important that we make that clear, that there's an expectation that that road's open by a date, and we give him a date, and it's to be done by. I mean, I, I don't know whatever recourse we have, what level of enforcement we have.
Just to wait, let me work.
So you have a demo reserve, any enforcement you put on that is, I mean, you can do it, but it's gonna be subject to the risk of.
That's not gonna open the road.
No, but.
I thought, I, I'm just confused, I thought we were supposed to get that, like.
He said he was gonna file that that, that week.
Then it hasn't been filed.
No.
So, a-again, this is a work session, let's work it out, we, we see where this is going. You know what I'm saying, and, and it's nothing against this guy, I don't, I'm not trying to bash him, I don't even know him, but it's not getting off to a good start. And this is, if I had a business downtown, man, I'd be stressed out, and the holidays are coming up, you know, and we've got this building, we can't do anything about it, it's already burnt and damaged.
I think that's why we need to have him here.
But there's nothing we can do.
I mean, we can't force him to show up, but we need to make a fairly stern request that he's here at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I agree, I'm getting frustrated, it seems to have a casual relationship with the truth, and these dates are just floating around all over the place.
Wow, that was, that was interesting how you said that, I just want that, just want that note, bye.
Assistant City Manager. He is occupying quite a bit of right of way, and we do have a structure set up in a right of way permit for parking. I mean, he is occupying thirty or forty spots, I don't know if you want us to send off correspondence for right of way permit, he should have a right of way permit right now anyway, because he does have the building under his authority now. So you could, you could set up a right of way permit, I don't know how you would set up, because it's by day, week, and month. I mean, you know that he's gonna ha, occupy it for a minimum of a month, but, you know, seventy-five dollars per spot is what it is per month, that, that would speak something to him, but it was just a suggestion as I was thinking of.
Not as concerned about us making, or charging.
I think that sends a great message.
It does, but I'm more concerned about whether or not that's gonna have the effect that we want it to have.
Unfortunately, that's one of our few limited options, I feel like.
I want that paperwork signed, how can we get that paperwork signed?
We can't, it's between him and his insurance company, and then they have to set the reserve aside, correct Eric? And then they forward it to us, and we hold it.
There's nothing that we can do to get that paperwork signed.
By law, we've got, what, six months? So we can't touch it.
Our, our, what you have the ability to do, Eric, you guys have tagged it?
We're waiting on that demo reserve.
Before you tag it, and then you have a timeline from that date, thirty days?
There's a thirty day for written report generally, and then sixty days for action, so, and that's, can be flexible or different based on situations.
Well, I would like to see what.
Here's, here's what I would say, it's, it's extremely important that if anybody has any type of claim with the lack of.
Follow through?
Follow through, fast pace, I mean, at the end of the day, he's got a duty and an obligation to get that, that taken care of. And if he's not doing that, from the city's perspective, I don't know that we have a lot of recourse, but I would highly encourage people that are feeling a financial burden in that, in downtown area to track that. I mean, if, if you feel like there's an extended claim because he's not taking the steps that he's supposed to be taking, when he's supposed to be taking it, then I would highly encourage you to consider whatever action that you deem as appropriate. I don't know what else to, we have to give him six months.
James, do we have to give six months?
Oh, we have six months to act, okay.
You could decide whether you want to pay for demo or not.
Well, then we're making a decision of whether or not the building's gonna stay there or not.
That's exactly right.
So.
So I, you know, I, I don't know, I.
But we can't make a decision until we have it.
We have, what, so your options are, you know, he's given us a couple of different varying timelines, we need, we need him to, okay. I understand that some things don't go, Eric said something about optimistic timeline, some things don't go that way. By the same token, you should be able to hit something within a week or so, especially when he was here two weeks ago, said he was gonna submit the draft of proof of loss. That doesn't take very long to submit that, so he started off on the wrong foot after getting some encouragement from me. Because I'd like to see the building, I don't want to see an empty lot there, I'd like to see the building there, I'd like to see it occupied, I'd like to see taxes paid on it. But he, he needs to hit these marks, and, but your only option is, if he doesn't hit the marks, is that we decide that we're going to spend the money to tear it down.
I would, I think the biggest thing is we just need to get him here.
Right.
You need to have that conversation.
I have a far-fetched idea, and those of you that know me know a lot of my ideas are. So I think because of the hazard, that it's structurally not sound, he can only work with two people at a time, we only want to have two people in there. Can we light that thing up, can he light that thing up so they can work round the clock, get his two people there round the clock, clean it up? I don't know, I told you it was a far-fetched idea.
Back to his reasoning for why he's gonna have such a small crew there to begin with, is they weren't able to operate heavy equipment until the bracing was in, because there was fear that the heavy equipment would cause too much shaking, ground shaking vibrations. That it could compromise the remaining wall, so they were gonna come in and clean up the Jefferson Street side, which they've done, there, I mean, there's pallets with bricks and most of the debris is out of there on the Jefferson Street side. And then they were gonna get the bracing in, and then they were gonna come in and clean up the rest once the bracing was in, and that was supposed to be done in a month. Because I remember saying to him, in a month, the bracing's gonna be in, and the cleanup's gonna be done, and he said yes. So that was what?
October seventh? And now it's not gonna be till December, but even, even at that, I mean, the real, the realistic view is, as far as the road being closed, that thing comes down, it's gonna go a lot further than the road. I'm not good at math, but I see the, the height of the wall, that road doesn't really matter if it goes down toward the road. So, I mean, if, maybe there's a way we can work with them to open part, part of the road in the meantime as the shoring goes on, I don't know. But it seems to me that having it blocked off, it's, it's, it's more dangerous to have people walking through there on the other side of the street.
I think if you've got the funds available, surprisingly enough, if you've got the funds available, when it's done, there are people who will get it done, and that's what, I don't understand why we're dragging it.
I think the communication needs to be open, if he's not hitting his deadlines, he needs to come with us and, and let us know what's going on, and be open and honest and transparent with us.
And I just wanna relate something, and, and this is actually based on information Eric gave me, that he, um, at that point, as of last Monday or Tuesday, had tried three different structural engineering firms, and it all turned him down. So I think that is part of it, it's not that he's got the guy ready to go and he's just not pulling the trigger, he's, he's having trouble finding the firm to do that.
To do what, the shoring or the rebuild?
Shoring. Shoring, so, I, I, Eric might have more recent.
Cause they, until it's sure, they can't take the, they can't take the rest of the demo off.
Well, that information in and of itself is that he's having trouble finding somebody to do that work, I would like to hear that from him. It's not that hard, it, it's, it is difficult to say I'm having a problem with this, but it's, it's important for you to be honest with us.
Yeah, and I don't know what, if, I, you know, I asked Eric because I had a meeting last Wednesday, and I wanted some, an update, so I think you had, must've gotten an email from him Monday or Tuesday or something. Um, and I know he posted kind of an extensive update of activities, not necessarily timeline, but activities on their Facebook page, but, um. You know, like I said, my understanding was that he had three firms all turn him down, he was going with the fourth one. Um, I understand, we all understand it's hard to get contractors, nobody wants to see this thing finished or started more than I do, believe me. Um, but I think we also have to be realistic, it's never gonna happen as quickly as we would like.
That's true.
Especially something so, so complicated, so.
Well, he, and what he said to us today, Steve, is, uh, if five, he met with five different structural engineering firms, two have agreed to help, and he's working with the fastest responding, responding firm, which is, the last meeting was with Timo Titch. It's the same firm that did the structural on the Methodist.
The church, right, yeah, that's what I heard, so.
James, anything you wanna add to that? Well, this is going to be a discussion that we'll be having, um, until, uh, well, until we get a total result, so.
I would, I would.
I, I still think, uh, I still think we gotta look at, um, looking to see if there's something that we're not seeing, on a way that we can squeeze them.
Oh, I just want a thing that Eric, um, maybe make sure that we review with Patrick, what's the most aggressive timeline that we can be on? Um, and just make sure that we know that and can communicate that you've got a council that, uh, is gonna be anxious and potentially ready to, to move down that path. When, if something doesn't happen, but we need to know what the, that timeline looks like. Is there any, Eric, just theoretically, if we have to go down that path, or we're demoing the building, is doing it in the winter the worst time to be doing that?
No.
Okay, I mean, there's.
No, actually, it's probably just as easy in the winter. No.
We good? I think we're, I think we're on the same page on that, okay. And thank you guys for coming down, and thank you for your patience too, I, we, we get it, we get it, but not as much as you do, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do our best work for you. Number, number four, everybody's good, right? Number three, everybody's good? Number four is a feral cat program, a street cat with no desire, Janine, come on down.
Thank you, good afternoon, council, I have a little few documents that I don't think you need to read them, but they're kind of interesting as to feral cats. My name is Janine Walsh, my address is two two zero zero South Main Street here in Burlington. I am the treasurer of a five oh one C three corporation called a street cat with no desire. In this presentation, I will refer to a street cat with no desire simply as street cats. The purpose of our nonprofit is to trap, neuter, and release feral cats back into the neighborhoods where they are trapped. In addition, street cats vaccinates the cat against rabies, these procedures are done by a licensed veterinarian. The cats I am discussing today are the homeless cats that are in all of our neighborhoods. Our goal is to reduce the number of homeless cats in our city through spay and neuter, in four years, one unspayed female cat and her offspring will produce over twenty thousand cats.
What?
City of Burlington Code of Ordinance six five point three four prohibits the trapping of animals with humane live box traps on public or private property unless permitted by the city enforcement officer. This means obtaining a permit each and every time one wants to catch an animal. A street cat is asking for a variance from that ordinance so that, as needed, we as an organization can trap cats when the need arises. As is often the case, we will receive a call that a cat or perhaps our kittens are available to be caught. The necessity of waiting to obtain a permit can result in those cats disappearing, and our opportunity to catch them is lost. If given the opportunity to work in cooperation with the appropriate animal control officer, we as officers of a street cat would do the trapping. Or if asked to assist a resident in trapping, uh, uh, we would supervise that trapping. We often look for help in the neighborhood where the cat resides, uh, because without the corporate cooperation from the neighbors, our task is indeed difficult. But with education, we find people understand the need to catch and fix the cats. Catching cats and killing them is not the answer, not only is it cruel, but it does not work. Called the vacuum effect, removing feral cat populations only opens up the habitat to an influx of new cats from other territories. And the cycle begins again, the neutered cats protect their territory and keep the unneutered cats away. While we are grateful our city is not trapping and euthanizing homeless cats, we do feel that if something is not done, it will only get worse. By fixing feral cats and releasing them back, eventually the cat population will reduce naturally as no new kittens will be born. The animals die off, no feral cats, we are simply asking for the assistance of the city by allowing us to trap humanely. Without the necessity of obtaining a permit for every cat we trap, we will certainly comply with whatever might be required or asked by us, of us, uh, by the appropriate animal control officer.
Here a rock star, Janine.
I'm good with that.
James, what, uh, what can we do to assist, to assist them? Chief? Give us good news, chief.
Sure, I, uh, met with Janine and her group, uh, it was probably about a month or so ago, wasn't it? And, uh, we talked extensively about some of the hurdles, uh, that we would have, one is the, uh, permit that she's talking about, not having to get it every time. One of the resolutions to that is to, to issue maybe an annual permit, and another apprehension I have is to make sure that that, uh, trap is, is tagged with a name and, and a phone number or contact information. So if somebody does come across it, either our ACO or officers come across that, somebody reports, hey, somebody's trapping, live trapping, and they're not supposed to, we can identify it as one of theirs and, uh, and identify that. The other thing is, the annual permit would be reviewed just simply for any, uh, any violations of ordinance, or, or people reporting that animals are being left in there too long, or some of those situations that is, as to why we have the, uh, permit in the first place. Because people tend not to be as responsible as they, they, they initially intend to be. Um, so, uh, and now I'm, I'm talking about private individuals, uh, Janine and her group, I think, will, will do what needs to be done when it comes to the live traps and maintaining those. And if, if for some reason that breaks down, then we have a recourse to review that, uh, on an annual basis and, and not renew the permit, or we can revoke it somewhere in there when we do issue the permit. It's a simple annual permit and allowing them to do that, it's up to you, uh, whether or not, uh, you wanna allow them to trap. An animal, have it in custody, and then release it, cause that's not our, that's not our deal as the animal control enforcement, we trap the animals, live trap them, take them to the animal shelter, there's fines imposed. And, uh, vaccinations that are, that are, uh, done, or records of vaccination being proven, and then they're released back to the owner or adopted out. So, uh, that's up to you whether or not you want them to do that and the requirements for that.
Yeah, I, to me, I just think it would be another, another leg or an arm of that, you know, um, I still think we would still have to have, uh, a, a job to do on our end, but, uh, I, just me personally, I, I wanna pat you on the back. Gently and lovingly, because I, I just think that's, I'm not a huge animal person, but my daughter is, and she gives me a hard time, but I've got nothing against animals, and I just think that's.
I agree, whatever, uh, Chief Kramer thinks we need to do, we will do, and, and certainly, we, we know you don't leave a trap sitting for, uh, uh, a day, certainly. It's typically, if, if one traps, it's twice a day at least you check it, that's why we have neighbors to help, uh, and the neighbors have to realize the cats go back into their neighborhood. And if we have a situation where they don't want that, we don't do it, we're not taking the cats to the Humane Society after we neuter them, spay, rap, or vaccinate them, only to be euthanized, cause that's what happens.
Right, yeah, you can't, you, you can't rehome a feral cat, the humane feral.
And some cats aren't feral, so we have been pretty successful with picking up cats that are pretty friendly and finding homes, especially kittens. Uh, but if that doesn't occur, then they have to be sent back, and the whole idea is to replace them back, because as I said, and as the material tells you, other cats come in.
Yeah.
Uh, all kinds of, you know, whatever, I don't care if it's a bobcat community, they come in, if, if, if they leave, others come.
The only question I've got is, what steps do you take to ensure that somebody's outside cat isn't?
Well, the problem, my dear, is there shouldn't be an outside cat, with that's, because there is a license issue, uh, uh, an issue of cats being outside. But typically, if they're collared, obviously, they're not going to be, uh, uh, taken, if they're trapped, if they, where we release them, if they're not collared and they, we can attest, it, it seems that they are homeless. How do you know, they're dirty, they're skinny, they don't, they don't look so great, and if they're not neutered or spayed, and we happen to pick up a cat that doesn't, that belongs to someone, and we have them neutered or spayed, well, good on us, that's what I think. Because it shouldn't be out roaming anyway.
Yeah, they're at least lost.
But, uh, you know, typically, you can tell if it's a cat that belongs to someone. And, and another thing we could do, we just thought about, is putting out, you know, flipping a picture of it and putting it in the neighborhood and saying it's just someone's cat, you know, if you're not sure. But typically, it's the neighbors who are calling us saying.
Right on.
We have a cat, and it's been hanging around, and it's hungry, and it, or it's hurt, and that's when we'll go out, and typically, we just catch them because they're not so feral that we have to trap them.
True. You could, I, you could even use, I'd rather see a, hey, we're trapping feral cats sign rather than a political sign in a yard, you can even put those in the yard that this neighborhood were trapping, uh, this, this month, you know? So you keep your, keep your cats inside, can you?
Well, there was something that came up, I think maybe, I don't know who was doing it, but it was on Facebook, it was saying this neighborhood is being, they're trapping cats, put your, make sure your cat's outside, I don't know.
When you have Facebook.
Yeah, yeah, we have a Facebook.
So chief, you got that squared away then?
I can, I think I can handle it with, uh, with that annual permit, if that's, uh, permissible, I would, I would do that.
Okay, I'm down for it.
All right, so do I need to do something? Okay.
One thing I would just encourage you to do is make sure that your contact information is available, especially to the pound, because if, for example, you were to tag some, or, or trap somebody's cat, I wanna make sure that they have the ability and they contact somebody.
Sure.
Sure. This also presents a good argument for microchipping your pet as well.
It does.
Can you catch, because the vet will check for the chip.
Do, uh, do you clip their ears?
Yes, their ears get clipped, I don't do it, but.
Right, yeah, and that, and that helps for identification, it's, oh, we've, we've caught this one before, then they know.
And what do you do with the cat that keeps coming back?
That's what they say to me every time I come into City Hall, but.
Then they know. And what do you do with the cat that keeps coming back?
That's what they say to me every time I come into City Hall, but.
That's true, but, uh, I, I, you know, I haven't had a, up on North Fifth, we had a feral cat roam in the neighborhood, and I believe it was fixed, but I've never had a mouse in that house, because he, he keeps a pretty clean neighborhood.
And people, what's, what's kind of nice is that we, we have built houses for people in neighborhoods for, uh, feral cats to be in, and I've got five girl scouts who are making houses. They will ask to, if they could do that, it's their engineering project. So it's pretty cool, and this is a wonderful project.
Somebody with you, who's your, who's your friend, is that?
This is my friend from California.
That's your friend from California? Do you have any friends from Vermont?
Do you have any friends from Vermont, Doc?
I don't, no.
I'll take care of that next year, Abe's gone down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, um, brings us to number five, tax increment financing policy, Mr. Tisland.
Let you start, Eric, please, with the policy that you developed based, based off of the previous discussion.
What's in your packet is a, a very basic, almost an outline for a policy, uh, based on the discussion, uh, that Charlie, uh, brought forward and discussed with council. Uh, trying to put it in a form that could be utilized as a policy for council and/or developers to review, so, uh, just have the, um, criteria that was discussed, uh, for considering a housing policy. Again, comprehensive plan compatible, um, categories for affordable to mid-range housing, uh, this does have the private-public investment ratio as well. Um, and kind of a summary or quick example of what that includes, um, and then other criteria for consideration that, uh, could be considered, um, or was discussed with Charlie. Uh, developers shall provide equity in amount equal or greater than city TIP funding, uh, projects should show that it would not happen without city's financial assistance, uh, TIP rebate term to be examined, uh, be as short as possible. Um, again, no tax payment in TIP areas. Um, and then for TIP funding, uh, there's some, uh, different criteria that you could consider, um, again, based on that, uh, ratio, uh, if there's, that's something you wanted to pursue, if there's a lower ratio, then possibly a lower rebate percentage or term. Looking at a couple of other communities, uh, they had a base TIP funding, if it met certain criteria for fifty percent up to five years, and then expanded TIP funding if they met additional criteria such as architectural standards, LEED certified. Uh, redevelopment of existing properties or infill, so there's criteria that you can consider, uh, to get up to a, a higher percentage or longer term, uh, versus that base amount for, uh, just kind of a standard redevelopment option. And then having a, a natural application, uh, not just someone coming forward and asking for it, but actually getting the details and information on, um, what they're looking to do, what their costs are, uh, what their projected, uh, assessed values and, uh, development standards will be. So that it's, uh, not something coming in blindly to council, but we have a quite a bit of background for you. So this is just really based off what was presented from Charlie and the planning commission, and, uh, just kind of an outline, didn't wanna go into too much, uh, detail or depth until council decides, uh, whether you wanna move forward with this, or if any of these components are seen as viable, or something that you don't wanna see at all.
Okay, um, it's a work session, let's work it out, I, I just, I wanna be straight up front with this, I'm straight up front with you guys on. I don't, I don't like using TIP, period, and I don't like. I don't like manipulating markets, uh, I think, uh, I just don't think it's reality. You know, no matter, no matter how we set it up, we can, we can, we can do something, but it's not, it's not real, if it doesn't happen organically, then it's false, it's not a reality, and it's not something that we can count on. That's my mentality when it comes behind doing things like this, I think we should only get involved when we absolutely have to, and, um, I just don't really see the, I don't see that we need this, I think we're wasting time on this. I, I just wanna be completely honest, I think we're wasting time.
But here, I'll, I'll be the devil's advocate.
I didn't ask you to do that, though. Would you be an angel tonight?
That might be what this current council feels, but the reason we've got to this point of discussion is because we haven't had a TIP policy, so every time it comes up, we're reinventing the wheel. I, I, one, I, I can tell you after the first reading, I'm not ready to make any judgments on this, because it's gonna have to be, for me, I'm gonna have to go through it three or four times before I, I see anything that stands out, because as Jim noted in his note, it's, it can be a little bit dry. But, it's reading anyway, but I, I think the reason why we're discussing this is because we don't have a TIP policy, and so as the council changes from time to time, or, or, uh, seat changes here or there, we're constantly reinventing the wheel. I don't think TIP is a, is necessarily a bad thing, just like tax payment is not a. I don't think TIP is a, is necessarily a bad thing, just like tax payment is not a bad thing when you're desperate to, to create some str, infrastructure in your, in your, in your, uh, city. And we have, we have lots that we're acquiring the homes and some of those homes are gonna be demolished and maybe that would be worthwhile. So I, I think we, even though this might be difficult to discuss, I think we're gonna have to kick it around a little bit. But it's more than a one or two meeting deal, uh, because we've been waiting this long.
I would agree, and, and while I definitely understand your sentiments, Shane, I would say that TIP, TIP isn't necessarily something that is creating this false environment. It, and, and fortunately, one of the biggest reasons why we're looking at it is because the communities around us, a lot of the communities around us are using this as a tool in order to, um, uh, bring in investment. And I think unless we're willing to make some of those same changes, that we're not gonna see that same level of investment because obviously there's, there's not as much incentive out there. Um, yeah, I think it's just a way of leveling the playing field. And I think that where we are right now, not just in this community, but just nationally, what it costs to put in things like infrastructure, that this is really gonna kind of become the wave of the future for any type of development. Um, it hasn't necessarily been that way for a long time. But I think if you just look proportionally at what infrastructure costs have done over the last twenty-five, thirty, forty years, they've gone up at a curve, uh, that is, um, made a lot of that investment almost impossible for the median, especially the median below the income, but the medium income-er, uh, to be able to absorb that cost and their housing prices. So I think this is one way of trying to, uh, help level that playing field and create a better purchase, purchasing environment for, for those buyers. This isn't, in my mind, for the, uh, four, five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar buyer. This is, this is a, something that is going to probably better serve those people who are looking for homes from the one-twenty's all the way up into the two-seventy-fives. Um, I'm, I'm not a, I won't say that I'm not a fan, but I'm not ready to commit to the plan here because there's a lot of reading left to do and I think we've got a lot of math to do to, to determine whether or not it's appropriate for our community. Um, I'm still reading through the hundred and ten pages, Jim, that you sent me on TIP. Um, so, uh, but I do like the direction that we're headed. I think it's something that we need to put in play.
Uh, and, and, uh, don't misunderstand me, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with your sentiments on a lot about the organic growing, I think it's stronger, right? By the same token, I mean, Kate, Dan was here earlier, he was the first one we did. And I like it better now that it's a rebate, but if you look at the, the tax dollars realized nineteen years later, that year after year, sometimes those, those policies, sometimes those projects are good. I, I just think whether we, I, I, I think we need to have a policy, we've said we need to have a policy. And there's things in here we're gonna kick out, there's things in here we might change. But what, like, uh, you know, to echo some of Matt's statements, I think at least we need to, this isn't gonna be done in one meeting, I think this is something we need to work around until we get comfortable with it. But I think we do need, in order to keep staff from doing the yo-yo, uh, every, you know, every time, well, you're doing this, you're not doing that, you're doing this, you're not doing, I think we need to have a policy that a developer can come in, whether it's commercial or residential, and say, oh, that's their policy. Now I know how to work it.
Well, they, actually, we've got, we've got policy, though.
I mean, but not for, not for residential.
One of the things that helps me out, Shane, is we have Jim, who usually tries to make sure our ratios don't get out of whack. So I, I feel really comfortable that he helps guide us.
You wanna drink?
One other thing I'd say is this is not gonna be the final piece of policy that we create that's gonna fix all of our problems. I think it's gonna require many different things that are gonna provide different aspects of investment for different avenues for people to come in and take advantage of things that we are offering in our community. But in the long run, we'll see the benefits of that.
If we can make it easier for investors, maybe they'll look at us first.
I mean, that's part of it, but another part of it is just the quality of living for the people that we're trying to bring in, um, making sure that we're maintaining a high quality of living for the people that are already here. Um, I mean, there's, there's a number of things that we can do. We, one, um, I sit on another board and one of the things that we talked about was creating programs for new teachers that wanna live in the area where, but new teacher moved into Burlington, um, they'd get a five-year membership to the Y and we'd hook them up with different groups.
Riding lawnmower, yeah, I was at that meeting, I think that's a wonderful plan, I'm on board with that one.
We would provide them with complimentary memberships to different things like.
The bees, the bees, tickets to the bees.
I mean, just to try and get them involved in the community. And I'm not saying that that's where this is headed, but I'm saying that those are things that are thinking outside the box. This is one piece of something that's gonna make up a much larger picture, um, in order to try and improve the level of investment.
I like roots, people that, uh, people that have roots in the community, they'll stay regardless, you know? Um, not going anywhere, you know? There's, there's not a job that could pay me enough money to get me to leave Burlington, uh, because of the roots. I just think we need to look at different avenues, I just don't think you want money at it, uh, is the issue. I think you guys really ought to think about that. And I know you're saying that we just, we're just going through a policy and stuff like that, but once you open up the door for policy, it, it never ends, man. You know, it always starts small and then it's, and it's adding something else in, you know? How much, how much do you give? How much do you give? And every time we give something, again, we're giving away taxpayer dollars that you're saying, you know, we can make all of this, but who's to say that it's not gonna happen organically? Look how many things that we've got, look how many buildings I've put up, look how many homes I've been built just with the policies that we've already had in place, not doing anything. So again, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to.
But to your point, one thing that I think that we need to do is design some type of litmus test or goal or some way to measure the success of any program that we, to be able to determine if it's beneficial. Um, if we can create a TIP policy and then over the next, every five years review, you know, have we seen growth, have we seen more growth than we expected?
Did we make a mistake, should we have let that one happen organically?
Does it make even sense to have it? And whether if we redid an abatement or we create a TIP program or we create anything that we do, we should constantly be reviewing those results to determine whether or not they're paying dividends. And if they're not paying dividends, then we either change it or eliminate it. Uh, I, I wouldn't want us to create something and then just put it out there and never touch it again, uh, because then it's not gonna do us any good.
Guys, anything else? We've come to the end of the evening, kids. Mr. Tisland?
Wait.
Wait.
What about the appointment?
Does anybody have any problems with appointments?
No.
Good, okay, we've come to the end of the evening, kids. Mr. Huh? All right, play with me, girl. Tisdale?
For the tact, this policy, do you want any action or just further discussion down the road or any?
Eric included, why did you include the Johnson policy?
I guess kind of a simple policy that included not just housing, but all components for.
In fact, I don't think it had much to do with housing.
Yeah, but it had some components and it's also something that was easy to understand, or not necessarily easy, but easier to understand. And it, uh, included not just housing, but commercial and different.
So it had some components on the commercial side you liked, is that what you're saying?
Comprehensive plan, Shane.
It's, it's more designed around being a holistic policy. It, it, I mean, it has some flexibility for unique, for having something come forward, for additional funding if it has some uniqueness to it. It mentioned public art as an example, um, so that you could have, so some. I mean, it had some goals for what it was trying to accomplish, that you could, that you could justify for why you're doing it. Housing really wasn't what they're looking to fund. And if you look on a statewide basis, less than one percent of TIP projects or TIP funding goes towards housing. It is not, uh, it's not the typical use of TIP funds. And it seems strange to have a policy that's written around, uh, such a small portion of what TIP funding is used for. It should go into more of a holistic policy. And, and I think that's kind of what, as Eric's developing the Johnstone or putting in the Johnstone, it doesn't mean that you don't necessarily have a component like what's in there or what we've talked about for the housing, but it shouldn't be the sole focus.
Right.
Well, and just to add to that, if somebody comes in and wants to use TIP funding in order to create a commercial development, I'm all for that as well because now we're creating jobs.
Most places are careful about where they go with commercials. Some, I mean, Johnstones is a little bit more generic, a lot of communities specifically exclude commercial or they exclude box stores or they have some, they, they.
Because of the quality, because of the.
They're looking at it from the perspective of not promoting, uh, a new business that's going to essentially compete with existing businesses.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And that's really their main philosophy about why they don't wanna include for those.
But just to, to.
So what I, oh, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, does it make sense to also consider any type of sales tax revenue or things like that that are, that could be seen as a result of having that? I mean, if a box store wants to come into Burlington, but the space is cheaper in West Burlington, but we've got a TIP program that builds in Burlington, do we see an increase in sales tax revenue?
Didn't it make any difference on sales tax, bits in this county? It's all split on a per capita basis, yeah, but that part doesn't matter. But, I mean, those are some of the things to think about as you put together a policy and, and why to have them. I mean, that, if you look through the background report that I gave, or a couple of those, the, the one is an evaluation on a national basis. I mean, the biggest piece that I, that it had for policy recommendation for using TIP wisely is that but-for provision. Um, you shouldn't be using it for, to fund a project unless it would happen or wouldn't happen unless you had this funding to go in with it. Now, that's a lot of times difficult to know on, on a given project. But, uh, I mean, we, we've already done one here for residential that, just speaking with, with where it was at before the TIP request came in, it was already moving forward as a project that was happening without this funds. And a, a policy like that would say that you wouldn't do a project that, do that project because it was already gonna occur and you're, and you're carving out, um, you, tax dollars for something that's, that's already happening and it's, you're not getting a benefit from it.
I mean, I'm okay with that particular provision. It's the ratio of that.
You just wanna hit that, don't you?
So, well, I.
I, I think we did obviously, you know, look over this ourselves and continue discussion. I mean, this isn't something that, we need to break it up into bite-sized pieces, I think, for us to be more comfortable and be able to discuss it and come to some sort of consensus.
I do like the fact that you found some things on the Johnson plan that, that you see commercially. I mean, if we're looking at a TIP policy, let's look at the whole policy, let's, let's do it and do it right. And that means continue to work on it until we, everybody's at a good compromise.
Or until Shane's.
Or until, yeah. Anyway, I, I would, my feeling is we need to continue to work on it. And may, maybe you're saying, Jim, is the, the sole focus of the residential, look at the whole thing.
Well, it's kinda, I mean, we're trying to throw these out and things to think about.
Right.
What's, what's been brought before you is a policy that's focused on the housing. Um, you may look at saying you just wanna, you, you wanna drop the topic altogether. You may say you wanna work on that project or that area and maybe modify the policy that Eric has developed. You may say you wanna take it and, how do you incorporate it into a larger policy? But that's kind of what you'll have to have some thoughts about, how do you wanna see proceeding with this as we move forward over the next few weeks?
Thank you.
Yeah, but we didn't, we didn't decide that we want a TIP just for housing tonight.
No.
No.
No, that's less than one percent nationwide of all TIP dollars, why do we even need a policy? Am I understanding statewide?
On a statewide basis, so the, the projects that have gone on that are currently active, less than one percent of them are towards housing.
So the majority infrastructure then?
Majority is infrastructure.
Okay.
Mr. T, Mr. Tisdale? Uh, Peter, closing, uh, anything on the way out?
No, everybody be safe, we've got trick-or-treaters out Wednesday, I think, for most communities, some trick-or-treat tomorrow night, maybe, so be extra careful, um.
Counselor?
Nothing, thanks.
MPT?
Of course, uh, so yes, trick-or-treat, um, on the thirty-first, which is Wednesday. I believe there is, uh, an event at the Memorial Auditorium and that is from six to eight P.M. So, and is that sponsored by the police department? Yes, sponsored by the Burlington Police Department. Uh, and then you still have a couple more days to go to the Haunted Auditorium, which I am gonna go to, uh, tomorrow.
I had a line, I think it's going over huge.
Yeah, okay, great, and that's for seven to eleven-thirty P.M., tomorrow and Wednesday, ten dollars. It seems like it's gonna be great, I'm excited. And then my, one of my favorite events of the year is the Burlington Fine Arts League Gala and that is November third, which is Saturday, uh, at six P.M. at Pizzazz. Um, so you can still get tickets and dress up, this year's theme is, uh, the Great Gala, which is, uh, plays on the Great Gatsby or the roaring twenties.
Cool.
That is all I have.
You gotta get your hair all fancy and whatnot and all that stuff, put glitter on and all that. That's enough of that kind of talk. All right, counselor?
Good.
James?
Were there appointments?
Yeah, we talked about it, yeah, we're all good.
Yep.
What is he gonna talk about?
Trash.
We do not have all of the cart exchanges completed. We still have, well, the numbers are growing all the time. I'm not really sure how many people are coming forth now and paying the exchange fee, but people are still calling. In regards to that, uh, we have like a hundred and seventy-five as of this afternoon yet to do. And in addition to that, we have a hundred and ten, which last week we were down to ninety, but now we're at a hundred and ten deliveries, which represent people who have not had their ninety-five or sixty-five gallon cart delivered. Plus, I think there's about seventy households that want a second cart. And, um, so the phone calls have slowed down, slowed down to give us an opportunity to start to work through problems and issues that we have. But, uh, we have, as I said, a hundred and seventy-five exchanges to do, meaning there are households out there who have a sixty-five and want it exchanged to a ninety-five, or they have a thirty-five that wants to go to a sixty-five. We have some sixty-fives that wanna go down to a thirty-five. And in addition to that, as I said, we have a hundred and ten households that want, uh, uh, a hundred and ten households who either don't have a cart or they want a second cart, the largest being that want a second cart. Now, the ordinance and the resolutions that we pass basically put the program in place effective November first, which is this week. Um, I have, uh, shipment of sixty-fives and ninety-fives arriving tomorrow morning. Um, there is no way that we're going to have those carts distributed and those exchanges made by November first. Originally, I was hoping that we'd have them done by this coming weekend, but that's just, I don't think that's being realistic. Um, I did send an email to the city manager last week suggesting that, uh, a few, a couple of options, but one is that, uh, we make the program effective, uh, um, after Friday the sixteenth. That gives me two weeks to get the exchanges done, to get the extra carts delivered and have everything in place. So what does that mean in the meantime? My suggestion, or would you wanna speak?
The, the part that makes the most sense, especially those that you haven't had your new carts delivered to, you had suggested not having it, not charging the tag fee if they have extra garbage out. You're, you're dealing with a hundred and, a hundred and fifty households out of those accounts. I don't know how many you won't have by the first, but I could see waiving those until you get the carts delivered.
Well, what I'm proposing is that we waive the, uh, cult use of, required use of trash tags for extra trash until after the weekend of the sixteenth.
I would use it for whatever ones don't get delivered.
Well, we just, the drivers won't know who has, uh.
If they don't have the new carts.
But they may have a sixty-five and they're waiting for a ninety-five, or they're waiting for a second ninety-five or sixty-five. And, uh, I, that could be a way to go about it, but I, I just, I see it's very difficult to implement for, I mean, crew.
Does the sixteen give you enough time, you think, Don?
Yeah, I think it will, I think it will. It's, the calls are gonna keep coming in and people are gonna ask, but I, I'm somewhat surprised at the number of households that want second carts, certainly. I'm not really. I'm not really surprised about the exchanges. I would say we're at probably four hundred households that have asked for exchanges. And we have people still, as I said, asking for the free exchange, which we are requiring them to pay the thirty-five dollar exchange fee at this point. We're past the mailers, the problems with U.S. Mail, not delivering the mailer or not re, delivering the returned mailer. And the carts are still on display at City Hall. The carts are still on display at the wastewater treatment plant. We certainly encourage people to come and to look at those carts before they make their selection. But that's what, you know, I, I fielded a few calls. People are concerned, can I still use my old can? Because I still don't have my new trash cart yet. And we'll say, yes, you can continue to do so. So I foresee allowing the use of the cans themselves until through Friday the sixteenth. And then that should take care of it. We should have the program completely implemented. The other thing I wanted to comment about that is concerning me right now is that we are in, we are in the leaf program. And so our crew is split between trash and collection of leaves. During the month of November, we have two holiday weeks. And on those two holiday weeks, they have to pick up five days of trash in four days. There are a few houses out there who have taken us up and have elected to go ahead and they're use their new trash cart to put the leaves in. A former council had approved the use of garbage cans and for the set out of leaves and had set it up so that the leaves are collected from the trash route the day after trash is collected with the idea that trash cart is empty or the can is empty. They can use that newly emptied can or cart to put their leaves in and have their leaves emptied the following day. When we get into those holiday weeks, I, and that's going to be in the teeth probably of the leaf collection program. We're going to be running behind on leaves. In other words, the leaves are very likely not to be collected the next day after trash is collected. Because trash has to take priority. People have a schedule. They expect us to follow the schedule. Leaves, not so much, although there are expectations out there. I want the public to realize that when we get into those holiday weeks, we're pressed and stretched for time. This will be the first holiday week that we go to where the trash carts are in use. If you use your trash cart for leaves in a holiday week in particular, there's a very good chance your cart may be tied up with leaves in it for two or three days after your garbage day. And if you're looking to put garbage in your trash cart, it may have, may be full of leaves that we just haven't gotten to it yet. So I guess I would strongly suggest that you reconsider using your trash cart for your leaves. Especially during those weeks during which there are holidays. You'd be safest not to do it at all. The old trash cans, that's fine. But the trash cart, if you're relying that to put your garbage in, you may be surprised that those leaves may be in there two, three, four days after your normal leaf collection for us, before we can get to it.
Makes sense.
Should we make up some type of press release for that? Recommendation?
We definitely want to make sure that we, that we bring that up during the meetings of the, of the busy, of the busy time. And I don't know what else. What else you'd want to do on that? If they want to put something on the website or something?
Well, we can use the, yeah, the media as best we can.
I don't know where Hightower is tonight, but anyways.
They've got it today.
They have more important things to do.
So one of those weeks obviously would be Thanksgiving. What would be the other one?
Veterans.
Okay.
Veterans Day, isn't that November, the, I don't know, tenth, eleventh, something like that. But the city employees observe it the Monday. So.
So you guys satisfied? Thank you, Don. James, anything else?
Don does all my updates anymore.
Well, I'll tell you what, everybody needs to have one of those guys to just travel around. Hey, um, yeah, just want to encourage everybody to go to the Haunted Auditorium. It is phenomenal. This is the first year and they've just really knocked it out of the park. I've gone just about every possible night and they just rock my socks. I even look for them in certain spots where they've come out and they still get me. It's awesome. So uh, support that. I forgot to thank the daughters of the American Revolution. Thank you. And also just want to give a shout out to the nuclear weapons workers. I can't remember if I did that or not. Did I do that? Okay, giving a shout out to the nuclear weapons workers. You guys are not forgotten. We appreciate your sacrifice that you made. Those people are truly altruistic. All right. That's it. That's all I've got. We're good?
Yeah.